A brochure that we will be using this evening for our opening prayer. And prior to that, I would ask that you please listen to the names of the departed from this past season and keep them in your prayers as we continue this evening.
I can't hear anything.
Okay. David Johnson, father of Trisha Maltby, teacher at Christ the King. Dr. Frederick James Simpson, father of Leslie Houlihan, teacher at Guardian Angels. Stella Batista, mother of Andrea Swindon, communications officer, Strategic Communication Services. Tom Buddy de Montbrune, father of Mary McCurry, teacher at Holy Family Catholic School. Charles Cesar Senior, father of Charlie Cesar, supervisor of print services. Andrea Eliovich, father of Anna Percassin, principal, St. Bridget Catholic Elementary School in Georgetown. Adriana Lubrick, special ed resource teacher, St. Joseph Catholic School in Oakville. And Rosemary Simic, child and youth counselor, St. Paul and St. Patrick. Antonio Constantini, father of Rosanna Constantini, special ed resource teacher at St. John in Burlington. And Tom Zimmerman, father of Julie Zimmerman, occasional teacher with our board. And let us begin this new year with the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. This liturgy is about new beginnings and a time for new beginnings. The new year is a time for reflection as well as celebration. As you look back on the past year and all that has taken place in your life, remember, each experience for the good that has come out of it and for the knowledge you have gained. Remember the efforts you have made and the goals you have reached. Remember the love you have shared and the happiness you have brought. And remember the laughter, the joy, the hard work and the tears. And as you reflect on the past year, also be thinking of the new one because most importantly, the new year is a time of birth, new beginnings, and a celebration of life.
Sacred mystery, waiting on the threshold of this new year, you open the gates and beckon to us. Come, come, be not wary of what awaits you as you enter the unknown terrain. Be not doubtful of your ability to grow from its joys and sorrows, for I am with you. I will be your guide, I will be your protector. You will not be alone. Guardian of this new year, we set aside our fears, worries, concerns. We open our lives to mystery, to beauty, to hospitality, to questions, to endless opportunity of discovering you in our relationships, and to all the silent whispers of wonder that will draw us to your heart. We welcome your unfailing presence and walk with hope into this new year.
Let us listen to words from the prophet Isaiah. Thus says the Lord, who makes a way in the sea, a path in the mighty waters who brings out chariot and horse, army and warrior. They lie down, they cannot rise, they are extinguished, quenched like a wick. Do not remember the former things, or consider the things of the old. I am about to do a new thing. Now it springs forth, do you not perceive it? I will make a way in the wilderness and rivers of the desert. The word of the Lord.
Amen. I am the new year. I am an unspoiled page in your book of time. I am the next chance at the art of living. I am your opportunity to practice what you have learned about life during the last 12 months. All that you sought and didn't find is hidden in me, waiting for you to search it but with more determination. All the good that you tried for but didn't achieve is mine to grant. And all that you dreamed but did not dare to do, all that you hoped but did not obtain, all that faith that you claimed but did not have, these slumber lightly, waiting to be awakened by the touch of strong purpose. I am your opportunity to renew your allegiance to him who said, behold, I make all things new. To a Christian is to have received a new life, to have become a new life. The old has passed away, behold, the new has come. Through baptism, our old selves have been buried in the tomb of Christ and we have risen with him to newness of life. To be a Christian is to believe in the new. To be a Christian is to believe in a God of newness, perpetually active among us, forever bringing the new out of the old. To be a Christian is to dare to attempt to see as God sees. Please join me. Faithful companion, in this new year, I pray to live deeply with purpose, to live freely with detachment, to live wisely with humility, to live justly with compassion, to live lovingly with fidelity, to live mindly with awareness, to live gratefully with generosity, and to live fully within peace. Help us to hold this vision and to daily renew it in our hearts, becoming ever more one with you, our truest selves. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Madam Director, that was beautiful, thank you. Before we ask Madam Vice Chair to read the motions adopted in camera, I would just like to make note that we do have three trustees on a conference call this evening. We have trustee Paul Marai from Oakville, trustee Ed Vienna from Oakville, trustee Alice Anne Lemay from Oakville. All are on a conference call and are listening to this meeting right now, participating in their roles as trustees. So, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our Human Resources Activity Report, we have Marjorie MacArthur, Vice Principal, transferred to Christ the King Catholic Secondary School, effective February 3rd, 2014. And Karen Bullhauer, transferred to Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School as Teacher in Charge, effective February 3rd, 2014. And we have John Guzzo, appointed as Acting Elementary Principal at St. Catherine of Alexandria Catholic Elementary School, effective January 6th, 2014. Thank you.
Now, we will have the approval of the agenda. Additions to the agenda, please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have an addition to the agenda.
Okay, trustee Marai and then trustee Rowe. Okay, anyone else?
My-
Go ahead, please, Paul.
Yeah, I was going to add a notice of motion I'd like to provide.
Absolutely. Would you like to-
I think you got it, I guess as a item on the agenda later on, if I can elaborate then.
Thank you.
What is it?
It's, I will elaborate then, but it's a notice of motion for educational town halls.
For what?
Educational town halls.
We'll discuss it a little bit later, Allison, like Christmas, you know, you've got to wait.
No, but he's got to tell us what it is.
Well, he's going to a little bit later.
But he has, he doesn't have to expand on it, but he does have to tell us what the title of it is.
He just did.
Educational, educational town halls.
Education-
Thank you.
Educational town halls.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to add an item on winter busing.
On winter busing, so would that be under information?
That's fine, yes, thank you.
Okay. Danielle, the notice of motion, will that stand under information also?
Yes.
Okay, so 10.7 is the notice of motion on educational town halls, and 10.8 is trustee Rowe's winter busing. Okay, no other additions? All right, can I have a mover, please, for the-
I'm all, Ed Vienna, more.
Thank you, trustee Vienna, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, all in favor?
I do.
Thank you, and the trustees on the line are in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Declaration of conflict of interest, we do not have anything there unless anyone tells me otherwise. We do not have any presentations or delegations, so we will have approval of the minutes. May I have a mover, please, for the regular board meeting minutes of December 17th?
So moved.
Pardon me?
So moved, Allison.
Thank you, Allison, seconded by trustee Michael. All in favor? Thank you.
Hello.
Business arising from the previous meetings, on page 7, a summary of items, any questions to those items? Okay. Action items, we have no action items this evening, nor do we have any staff reports this evening. So we are in information items, 10.1, student trustees update. Is there anyone speaking? Okay, trustee Maria is going to speak for trustee Erica this evening, thank you.
Student Senate has begun planning the gala that will collaborate with the Halt and Give Respect, Get Respect campaign. We look forward to working with Miss Tenelli and Mr. Negro.
Thank you. Any questions to trustee Maria? Okay. 10.2, educational field trips, Superintendent Cipriano.
Through you, Madam Chair, present our one and only field trip, for your information. This is a specialist high school major field trip, provincial competition for the DECA Business Club, for your information.
Thank you. Any questions pertaining to that schism field trip? Okay, thank you. Student Voice, approved Speak Up Projects, Superintendent McGillicuddy.
Through you, Madam Chair, presented for information are the ministry-approved Speak Up Projects for the 2013-2014 school year. Speak Up Projects are part of the Ministry of Education Student Voice Initiative. They are projects designed and implemented by students to foster student engagement, providing excellent leadership development opportunities in our schools. I'm very pleased to share the good news around the increase in approved projects, 49 compared to 24 last year, representing a little over twice as much funding. This increase is a testament to both the desire of our students to make a difference and the commitment of our school staff to support their efforts. As part of this report, you can see the list of schools, their project titles, and the approved funding. And just to highlight a couple of examples, St. Dominic Elementary School students are running a lunchtime computer programming club using Tinker, which is a computer language designed for grade four to eight students. And Holy Trinity Secondary School is using funding to support a Best Buddies chapter. Best Buddies is a club run by students to support their developmentally delayed peers with an emphasis on social skills and student life. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the leadership of Kathy Jenkins and her Pathways team for their support of schools during the application process, and I welcome any questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent McGillicuddy, and we have Madam Vice Chair's question.
Through you, Madam Chair, first of all, this is wonderful news that, you know, our system is taking advantage of this. I guess my question is, do we know, are these all the schools that apply? In other words, is every school getting what they're applying for, or do we have some schools that apply and aren't approved?
Through you, Madam Chair, the application process does not guarantee approval, and the one item the ministry did respond to all the boards in the province was that in many of the cases where schools were not approved for projects this year was because they had failed to submit a report as required from the previous year. But I do not have the information as to which schools applied that did not receive funding this year, I can find that out for you if you'd like.
Trustee G.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I have actually seen the Best Buddy program in effect, and it really is-
I'm sorry, I want to say?
Thanks, I was just saying, I've seen the Best Buddy program in effect at my school, and it really, it really is awesome. Like, it really does help these kids, and even, even like the people in my school that are part of the program, like, everyone, everyone benefits from this, and it really is worth whatever we put into it, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Trustee Vienna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and continuing strong, that shows they're doing an excellent job, and excellent voices responding on our Catholic District School Board. And keep pushing because this is an excellent opportunity for them one day when going to be out of school, it could add this to his resume and be ready to work, workforce or whatever his endeavors will be. My congratulations goes out to all of them. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, trustee Vienna. Excellent job, Superintendent McGillicuddy to you and to the curriculum personnel. Thank you. And also to Jacqueline. Did you have something else, Jason? No, you're okay, all right. 10.4, extensive trip advisory committee, E-TAC, and that is Superintendent Negro.
Through you, Madam Chair, I present to you some details of three approved trips that are involving two service trips to the Dominican Republic, and one is a biennial exchange between St. Ignatius of Loyola and Kitakowachi Satsuki Giaoka High School in Japan. And we're very pleased to have our students participate in this exchange as well.
Okay. Could you give us a commentary, please? I don't want to hear anything.
Sorry about that, Trafalume. It's just details on the exchange that we have between St. Ignatius of Loyola and Kitakowachi Satsuki Giaoka High School in Japan. That's a mouthful, I practiced it a couple of times before coming tonight, but it really is a wonderful exchange, and it happens every two years that we go there, and then on the off-year, that school comes here, so we're pleased that our students can participate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Superintendent Negro?
I have a question or a comment, am I saying?
Go ahead.
To you, Vienna.
Trustee Vienna has a comment.
Can I?
Yes.
We've been discussing on the past, can you hear me?
Can you hear Jackson?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been discussing in the past to get some information, hello?
We're here, we're listening.
Okay, to get some information right here in Canada, that special up north Indian reserves, we have lots in need for housing and water and other things, because unfortunately, Sherrit is started home, and I believe that very strongly. Anything I've done about that yet?
So, the Martin Aboriginal Education-
Do you have an information yet about it?
Um, yes, Superintendent Negro is going to respond to you now, Ed, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Former Prime Minister Paul Martin has, is now chairing an organization called the Martin Aboriginal Education Initiative, that does look to service projects in our reserves all across Ontario. I would agree with trustee Vienna that there is significant service work that could be done on those reserves in Ontario itself. So, I'm happy to move that initiative forward through the Aboriginal Education portfolio and make information available to our schools that would like to opt into those types of service projects right at home. So, happy to do that, trustee Vienna.
Any other ques-, any other questions on this issue? No? Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Negro. Madam Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Before I ask Superintendent Herman to present item 10.5, I asked Jacqueline to prepare this report for trustees, mostly because there was a few public consultation evenings, I think in Burlington and Oakville, where trustees were asked about our math focus. So, this is part one of some information for you, in particular in the elementary, so that you understand and have some information about what we are doing as a district to address the math concerns that have come forward in our board improvement plan and indeed throughout the province. And I'd also like to, at this time, extend my thanks to Superintendent Herman, as this is her last board meeting this evening.
Thank you, Paula. Through you, Madam Chair, just to set the context for this report then, as our director has indicated, the board report is a first in a series of reports that will come to the board over this academic year. And the purpose of the report really is to provide evidence and information of progress, and this report specifically focuses on what is happening currently in the elementary panel, and it is identified in the multi-year board improvement plan for student achievement and well-being. It's important for trustees to recognize that the improvement is a collective commitment, and so it's collective, interdepartmental, and senior team commitment. Subsequent reports will therefore focus on updates on initiatives in the secondary panel, special education, and leadership, because we work together. The results of the annual EQAO administration, as trustees know, consistently show that as a board, students in this board are among the best in the province in reading, writing, and math. But we know that to maintain this track record and to achieve our vision of excellence requires commitment to a results-based accountability framework and honesty about what we are doing well and what we must do better. And so when we look at our EQAO results over the past five years, we find that the percentage of primary and junior students achieving at or above the provincial standard has increased in both reading and writing. Simultaneously over the past five years, the percentage of primary and junior students achieving at or above the provincial standard has decreased by 4% in primary and 3% in junior respectively, particularly in the area of mathematics skills. What I'd like to kind of point out, to share with trustees this evening, that a disaggregation of that EQA data actually shows that students in both of those divisions, they perform exceedingly well in knowledge and understanding, and I think that's important for laypeople to understand that what this means is that our students are actually doing very well on basic math skills and procedural knowledge. Where they are having difficulty is in the area of application and thinking, and that means being able to apply, they can all add, they can all subtract, multiply, but it's when do we use those operations in daily living and in problem-solving skills. Both the primary and junior students continue to perform better on multiple choice questions rather than those open response questions. The open response questions are the big thinking, problem-solving questions. So to address that then, we continue as a senior team, as a staff developers, to build our own knowledge base of what works to improve learning in mathematics. This December, we were privileged, as one of the few boards, to be invited to participate and attend a provincial math forum that was facilitated by the Literacy and Numeracy Secretariat. And at this forum, they brought in the lead researchers in the area of math. These are papers and research papers that staff read, but we actually had the opportunity to engage with the researchers and to learn from them firsthand what they were finding was making a difference in the learning of mathematics. I think the news for us was that our participation in the forum really was an affirmation, the fact that all the strategies that we have selected and included in our board improvement plan are actually the strategies that evidence, that there is evidence to show it makes a huge difference in student learning. So now we all have to move to more forward with the implementation. Just in summary, the research is showing that effective mathematics instruction is based on increased knowledge of what works in the learning of mathematics, so being engaged with all the research, keeping in touch with those researchers. Increasing student access to teachers have a strong knowledge of math content and pedagogy, so that's instruction and how they present the delivery of the content. That when we teach, the teaching needs to be based on problem-solving and inquiry, we need to work, we need to move away from the fact sheets and the worksheets. An increased focus on the use of manipulative concrete materials and technologies for investigating mathematical concepts. What was really interesting in this presentation was the importance of having those concrete materials all the way through from kindergarten to grade 12. And that's what the research is showing. Engaging all students in complex problem-solving, providing appropriate levels of support, early intervention, we know that this works because this is what has made a difference for our students in literacy, and ensuring that all of our efforts at the district level are aligned, and we're working collectively with collective ownership and accountability for success. And I think the fact that we are providing a series of reports for all the members of the team indicates that collective commitment. I would like to take the opportunity to specifically highlight how we implemented a few of the selected strategies, so that some of these are new to trustees. We continue to provide job embedded learning opportunities which allow teachers to come together at their schools with instructional coaches, in which they look at the curriculum, they plan lessons together, they go into classrooms, co-teach, and debrief the lessons after observing the students. That learning design honors the seven principles that are noted in the report before trustees. We continue that we are in the third year of this implementation, and we know that any implementation to be effective needs three to five years. We continue to provide PD in the appropriate use of a variety of manipulative technologies, and this year we have increased our emphasis on the use of interactive whiteboards and iPads, because we know that this contributes to student motivation and engagement and understanding. To further support teacher learning, the Hawthorne Catholic District School Board, I'm very proud to announce, has partnered with both the Ministry of Education and York University to cover the full course of either a primary, junior, or an intermediate math additional qualifications course. The funds we are using to support this, the strategy one is embedded deeply in our board improvement plan, and the funds we are using are ministry funds, we have permission to do that. These math AQ courses have been specifically developed for our board, for probationary and permanent contract teachers, and we have been able to build in a job-based instructional coaching session in addition to an AQ. When our teachers usually go out to an AQ course in the evening, they simply get the lessons. Here we have instructors coming out, our teachers are going in in the evening, taking the lessons, but then during the day, instructors coming out with those teachers in one of our classrooms, and then actually implementing what they're learning, so they can debrief the lesson. Currently, we have 56 teachers enrolled in the primary junior math AQ, and 23 teachers have enrolled in the intermediate math AQ. In addition to that additional learning for teachers, we are also providing additional early intervention programs for our students. And so we have a variety of in-school tutoring programs, tutors in the classroom is new for us, it's the second year of implementation, and we have expanded the program. We have selected those schools very strategically, based on their math trends and whether their math scores are declining. We also have additional after-school homework clubs and intervention clubs for our students. We are once again being supported with ministry funds to pay our teachers, to facilitate those after-school programs at no cost to our parents. We are obviously very aware of that very critical role that parents play at home, and so we are applying a variety of methods to engage them in that parental support, specifically in the area of math. So for parents, we facilitated, and I believe we shared with trustees last year when we implemented the math webinar, we archived the math webinar, if parents go on, we've been using Synnevoice newsletters, brochures, sending it out to parents, anyone who goes online has access to the license. It's been very well received, I just would like to point out a correction in the report. The report indicates we only have 500 grade three to six students on registered users. We actually currently, a check, we now have 1,200 users registered on the program. We are looking at expanding to kindergarten, grade one and grade two students. In addition to that online access that's being used at home, the ministry also provides homework help, and this is a free tutoring service in the evening. Another new strategy is that each month, the curriculum consultant for math is providing the principals of each of our elementary schools with the mathematics tips, and if you have any students in an elementary school, you would have seen those being inserted into the monthly newsletters by principals. The goal of all those initiatives really is to heighten awareness of, heighten sort of, and shift towards teaching through problem-solving in our classrooms. We are focused on increased confidence with our teachers in mathematics teaching, focusing on increased student efficacy, confidence, and engagement. There's a huge emphasis, because we know this is what's going to make the difference, emphasis on student communication of their ideas and justification of their solutions. All of the research, and I've embedded the links to every research paper that was presented, it's clearly showing that a strong foundation in mathematics involves more than the rote application of procedural knowledge. As we continue to engage our students in the process of collaboratively, co-planning, co-teaching, and debriefing those three-part problem-solving lessons, we are absolutely confident that teachers will continue to deepen their math pedagogy and content knowledge, our students will be able to learn in an environment in which math knowledge building and understanding is nurtured and supported. And I leave this board with, just knowing that with sustained commitment and dedication to the implementation and really focused monitoring, the Hawthorne Catholic District School Board staff have the potential to achieve the goal of improved learning outcomes in the area of mathematics and continue to lead the province in achievement. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Herman, that was an excellent report, thank you.
Comments, please?
Pardon me?
Comments, please?
Yes, trustee Rowe, then trustee Lemay, thank you. Trustee Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. First one has to do with the math AQ, which sounds, sounds really terrific. My understanding of AQs often though is that there's a certain minimum level in that subject area that the teacher will have had to complete at university before they can qualify to take that AQ. Does that- Does that apply in this case?
It does not apply in this case, Trustee Rowe.
Oh, that's excellent, okay.
It's more the teaching of mathematics.
It's the teaching of mathematics, and we're actually what, what happens in the course, they're really looking at the mathematics curriculum because we know that it's the knowledge of the expectations that is the challenge for some of our teachers. So they're actually grounding the course in each of those expectations, then showing them the strategies that they can use to then deliver the content.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Trustee Lemay.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, it's a wonderful work on where we stand in mathematics. And I want to thank Jacqueline for all the years she's been with us, and you really meant for your garden, and to goodness gracious, you should come back again because you really need to wear my shirt, you're a wonderful advocate. And I know that the, the men here, Dan, is really a lot of talent in the Catholic world, so thank you for all your work over the past years.
Thank you, a follow-up from Trustee Rowe.
Thank you.
May I just like to complete the answer to the question?
Oh sure.
The response I provided was very specific to the elementary panel, but Trustee Rowe is absolutely correct that at the secondary level, there is a basic, a level of math, a requirement that is, that is needed for the, for the high school qualification. That being said, Trustee Rowe, I did investigate whether we needed to provide that AQ to our secondary panel as well. The difference in what we're providing here in this particular AQ which has been designed for us is that following an intermediate AQ that requires a requirement, a minimum requirement, a prerequisite, our teachers actually will then, anybody taking the math AQ, actually have to go in and write an exam on the math content. So that's more applicable to our high school, and we know that all of our high school teachers usually have math specialists. So it wasn't really relevant to the goals that we were trying to accomplish, so this is why we're doing a grade seven, eight math AQ.
That microphone is off, break your.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Trustee Rowe?
Yeah, that, yeah, that helps to clarify that, and, and of course, that's the question. Usually, high school students are taught math by, by a math, qualified math teacher, whereas elementary teachers are generalists and are required to teach, teach math. So my question, in addition to that, is, is there a point when we would, it would be practical to require some math courses on the part of elementary teachers perhaps existing, or maybe from Tim's point of view, or when we're hiring them?
Actually, that is a question that is actually being investigated by the ministry, and that's probably the portfolio that I'm shifting to. So Trustee Lemay, you will still hear from me, I think. It is being investigated, the fact that possibly, this is what the ministry is investigating, is looking at the prerequisites to enter the teacher's qualification program, and it is possible that candidates may need, may require a math course in the undergraduate, whether it's a statistics course or whether a pure math course. That is currently being investigated, and that is why you see the ministry allowing us to use their funds to pay for math AQ because they recognize the importance of bumping up the content knowledge. So it's one way that they're doing it. They're also exploring the possibility, maybe we need to look at math specialists. Because many of our elementary panel teachers come from a liberal arts background.
Thank you very much for the clarification, and I echo Alessan's comments that we're losing a great resource for a short time.
We're not losing her, we're just lending her. Lending her.
That's right.
Any other questions pertaining to the math report? No, okay, thank you. Ten point six, understanding the role of trustee. Alessan, are you ready to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam. I worked with the University of Toronto, St. Michael's College, and there were eight trustees across the province that took the course with Dr. Richard Shields. And it was certainly an eye-opener to me when you start exploring what it is that we do and how do we connect the role of a trustee, not in a political sense, but also in the Catholic. I mean, as you know, there were the modules that the ministry put out, the fourteen modules, but none of those looked at what is the role of a Catholic trustee. And I think that what I learned most was the certainly...
Hello? Keep going, you're fine.
Okay. When you, when you look at the strategic plan, and how much input do the trustees have in the strategic plan? And it's how important it is that we, we do have a good strategic plan that takes the board forward as a unit and how we've all contributed to that, but also on the policymaking and discernment. I'm going to, in the future, near future, make available to you the, the paper that we studied by Elizabeth Hibbert, Elizabeth Liebert, on discernment, and how that, how that affects your decision-making, and do we rush things too fast? Should we not sometimes be saying, let's pause on this for a minute, take a deep breath and see exactly where we're going? And when we're making a policy, what is going to be the domino effect on thirty thousand students and/or their parents? And I don't think that sometimes we do that. And like I say, the, the, so, and I think that if we had the sessions for candidates who are running for trustees, and Laurie Nar has agreed to work with me on this through the director, I think that the candidates would have a better understanding of what the connection is, not with just the political end of it, and not just with their own child's end of it, but with how it extends through the church and what, what is our mission in evangelization? What is our mission as Catholic trustees, and how do we accomplish that? So it was certainly an eye-opener, and I know you're going to hear more about it, I think, at the conference in a couple of weeks. And if it is offered again, I highly recommend it. You do it online, you don't have to go anywhere, you just have to read a lot and think a lot. And I think the thinking and the praying and the reflections that, that the eight of us did over the past year that ended in August, really, after, even after thirty-three years of being a trustee, was a real eye-opener to what the role is when it comes to being a Catholic school trustee. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Alessan. Any questions for Alessan at this point in time? Any comments? Madam Vice Chair?
Through you, Madam Chair. And thank you Alessan for sharing this, where there's been a fair amount of discussion also at OCSTA. And like you mentioned, they've formed a committee who's going to take a look at the next steps on how to continue on with this course. I think the difficulty I'm personally having with it, I guess if you could call it a difficulty, is, is how you compile which people should be giving the information and how it should be imparted, given that we are existing trustees, but we are elected officials. And I don't know that we should be using any board resources to fund that information. I, I don't know if there's been enough discussion about it as to how the whole thing should be put together so that we, we don't, we're not perceived as overstepping our boundaries in terms of financing and who's, you know, who's putting on the session and who's imparting the information, and whether the perception would be that if you have someone from the board speaking, now they already have a vested interest, and whether it could be a conflict of interest because they're basically telling a trustee how they should be doing their jobs. I think there's a lot more questions than there are answers at this point, and hopefully in the next few months with, you know, the continuance of this will have a little clearer indication of which way it should be going.
Any comments at all? I, I think that Madam Vice Chair has raised a lot of very good issues, and I think that we can discuss this later on as appropriate. Thank you. Regarding educational town halls, Trustee Murray, are you there?
Yes ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. So this motion stems from the very successful community consultations we had this fall. And it was, it was nice to see the superintendent's report on mathematics with a lot of response to some of the feedback we received at those community consultations. So the, I will go through the motion, just read it out for trustees, and obviously there can be debate at the next meeting before, before the vote. The notice motion is as follows, whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board represents numerous community stakeholders and ratepayers, whereas trustees are elected to represent the diverse views of these individuals, it resolves Halton Catholic District School Board conduct at least one round of education town halls in each municipality of Burlington, Holton Hills, Milton and Oakville, to be led by the elected trustees of the respective municipalities with the aid of Halton Catholic District School Board staff, and that support improvement plan be added to the agenda of the board after each round of education town halls, to ensure public input is helping guide the direction of the board.
Thank you, Trustee Murray. We'll leave that till the next meeting, and it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Any comments further to that, anyone? Madam, Madam Director, sorry.
Just one, just one comment. Thank you, Trustee Murray. You recall on the June eighteenth meeting, there were some system priorities that were delivered at that meeting, and under the creating conditions for success, one of, one of those conditions are to develop a participation policy, a public participation policy and public participation strategies. And I understand that two former staff members and one that's currently employed here went for training on how to do public consultations. So we have that information that we could also provide more information when we come back to the next meeting.
Okay, all right, all right there Paul, we'll leave it there?
Thank you.
Okay. Miscellaneous information, the OCSTA trustee award of merit. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss something? Oh, winter busing, it's further down my page, I'm sorry, my apologies. Ten point eight, winter busing. I didn't do it deliberately, Mark.
Oh, I know. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, the weather has been delightful. Particularly up north, we've had some problems with, with busing and, and the cold and, and that kind of thing. And there's a couple of items that I wanted to just put out there for discussion, really for ideas. The first one is to do with busing delays. There were quite long delays today for the busing because of the cold weather, and although I understand the majority of buses got out fine, some were delayed because of problems with the cold. And so the question that I wanted us to discuss was, what is an acceptable delay? Particularly if you're waiting for a bus, and what's an acceptable length of time? Because I think, as some of my ratepayers mentioned, some of the buses were up to an hour late. So, so that's a question for us to look at. And anything we can do to improve our procedure, and one thing that occurred to me might be to let the, through our website, let the public know what sources the director references before she makes a call as to, as to the busing, just as a, you know, so people know that it wasn't based on just an uninformed decision. So I put that out there, and I guess the first question is about acceptable delays for busing.
Just to give trustees an understanding of how this, how this works when, when, when transportation, usually the director is in conversation with the other school board director because we are in the consortium, the Halton Student Transportation Consortium. And at five thirty this morning, I was in conversation with David Uwali, who, and I have been in conversation with the HSTS personnel, informing us that their bus, their buses and their operators were willing and able to be on the road. So that's the, that's the procedure that happens. The directors really take their cue from the operators who are out in the field checking roads at five o'clock. So we're, we're reliant on HSTS and their operators to tell us if it's clear and ready to go. Mostly, the directors have a say when we close the school. So we are, as part of the Transportation Consortium, if you go on their website, they have operational procedures where it's, it's up to HSTS to tell us whether or not transportation is, is going to happen. It's not really up to, to me because I don't really want to close schools or not have kids get to school. So that's, that's one thing. As for delays, that's a good conversation that we can have, Superintendent McMahon, Chair Rebenda, and I sit on the HST committee, and that's something that we can bring forward moving into this, that delays of sixty minutes or less in this kind of weather is, is, is not good for, for our students. So that's something we will definitely bring forward to them.
That was, just to add to what the director said, that was what I was going to suggest, that we'll talk about it at HSTS. Just statistically today, eighty percent of the routes ran on time. So of the twenty percent that are left, about, sorry, I just got to read this again, of the, of the, there was about nine, which is about ninety routes, the twenty, the twenty percent is ninety routes. So fifty-nine or twelve percent of those were less than thirty minutes late. Twenty-eight or six percent were between thirty and sixty minutes late, and then three less than one percent of the routes ran greater than sixty minutes. And that's what Trustee Rowe, through you, Madam Chair, was referring to. So that statistically, this is from Karen LaCroix, who you've met before, who's the general manager from HSTA. So that just gives you an idea, to put the stats there. Sorry, the, the other thing is, is that by and large, our buses, not our buses, our carriers' buses are plugged in on, on bus yards, so they, they're, they're, they have block heaters and they're plugged in, they can start. Other boards, surrounding boards in the GTA, their buses aren't as fortunate, given the limited space they park at, at schools, churches, wherever they can, and they weren't plugged in. So there, with a lot of buses not being able to plug in, they did cancel in some areas in the GTA. So, and, and it bore out that the, where not all of our buses are plugged in, but the ones that are not plugged in, those are the ones that caused the delays. So that's pretty much, but it doesn't make the delays better, but those are the facts.
Thank you Superintendent McMahon, we have Trustee Michael.
This is the comment. I think your system works fabulously in all the things that people that have to get together and talk, and at the time they have to do it. But I think that a lot of the parents are so self-absorbed in their own little worlds and their, their own families that they see and hear on the news all the other people that are canceling busing, and they want that too, and they want it now. And you're the only one that they're going to bend on, so that's what, what happens. But having said that, it's going to be the same tomorrow, right? Okay.
Madam Vice Chair? Um, just a, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair. Who's calling?
Can I?
Ed, can you just hold on, please? Arlene's going first, and then you're next. Okay, Arlene.
Just for clarification, through you, Madam Chair, were the delays in the morning, where children are waiting for the bus in the morning, or are the delays later on in the day where they're still inside the school waiting for the bus? Because in my world, that's a big difference. And if you're standing outside in the cold, at the peak of the cold temperatures, that's different than later on in the day where you can stand inside of the school.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Intimosi, that those stats that I gave were this morning, they were not the afternoon runs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, that's nothing you can do. That was about the weather. And this, this happened once on a blue moon. The weather went very, very, very below this time. Like my servant, a lot of houses in Oakville, we had ten to fifteen hours without electricity. Look what's happening, Tony. We have three days and still some of them without electricity. So I don't think we should even talk and discuss this matter because this is once on a blue moon, you know, and God, God created days, and we have to suffer a little, unfortunately. That's not every day. And let's hope for the best. That's all I have to say, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, trustee Vienna. I would, I know that the director and I have spoken for a few minutes about this, and that maybe something can go on the website, and certainly principals could reinforce it with their parent community. But if their children are waiting for any longer than ten minutes in this kind of weather, perhaps there's an alternate source, that maybe they can go home, maybe they can't, maybe there's a neighbor they can go to. But this is just, I find it just terrible. But for an hour in this weather, a child stood out there, because I certainly wouldn't want to stand out there for an hour.
Yeah.
No, but I want any of my children to do so. So I find this is totally unacceptable, and I think that the people that are running it, and I'm sorry, I think the people that are running it should know that this was going to happen. So I'm not happy about this. Yes, it may, and hopefully they will be a little better prepared, and hopefully parents may, been burned once, will think twice, you know, maybe they can do something different, I don't know. But if their children go home and said they had to wait an hour, I would hope that they wouldn't have to wait an hour tomorrow. I don't know what else can be done between now, unless you put an emergency something out on the, what do you call it, the voice?
Center voice. We, through Lisa and I and Andrea, last evening or four o'clock last night, we're trying to put on the website all the possible information that we could in yellow, and even change the look of, there's a little clicky button with a bus on there, just so that it would be more visible to parents, so they didn't have to go too deep in layers to find out if there were delays for buses. So we obviously try to strategize, get on Twitter, get on Facebook, put it on the website, you know, let principals know they can check too. And as soon as we know, in the morning, whether or not transportation is a go, I'm texting Lisa so that, you know, our website and all the superintendents, so that they can talk to the principals. So we've got a pretty good phone tree, text tree, Twitter tree, website. It's just, we don't want kids out there, being out there too long, we want the bus to pick them up. And we're at, kind of at the mercy of what happens with HSTS. And we rely on them, and we are putting our trust in them to give us the best advice we can for our kids in the morning.
And I'm assuming that no schools held recess today?
No.
No, there's a message right there. Trustee Jason.
This is Solly Autobi. I don't know if there is a number that we go to, to close the schools, but I walked and it was really, really cold. And you can't walk, it wasn't safe to walk. I don't know what the number is, but a lot of people didn't show up. And in some of my classes, it wasn't worth showing up. But the schools were open, and it wasn't safe, because some students had to walk, and their parents were like, well, the schools are open. And there was an advisory that if you don't want your student to go to school, or if you think that it's too far for them to walk, or they can't get ready, then keep them home. But the schools were open, and so they sent their students. That's just another thing to consider.
Jason, the schools remain open for a number of reasons, but one of them is that parents have to go to work. And certainly with the younger children, they won't necessarily have a babysitter. So that's why they would deliver them to the school. And with the secondary schools, then they would expect that there would be a judgment, you know, either the parents will talk to their children and so forth, and that there would be some sort of judgment or agreement between the parent and the student as to what, what one student would discuss as being okay for walking, another one may find difficult. So it's very personal, too.
Just regarding HSTS, I was, I did have a friend who did have to wait an hour, she was part of that. But I did have a friend who, who had, the buses were showing up ten minutes earlier to each bus stop, so I thought that was actually pretty well done on their part because they were prepared for today. I think it was just that amount that had to wait the hour that was really bad, because my friend didn't even end up coming to school. So that was the only problem.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Okay, so moving along to the next one, which is eleven point one, OCSTA trustee award of merit, on page thirty-five. You will find the nomination forms, nomination package for trustees who wish to be considered for the award of merit. If there's anyone that would like to nominate someone, the whole package is there, it outlines the qualities, and it gives you the forms for completion. And that has to be into the OCSTA office no later than January the twenty-fourth at four P.M. And if you wanted to go through Danielle, you need to send it earlier than three-thirty. All right? So any questions pertaining to that? All right. Eleven point two, SEAC minutes, Superintendent Brown.
I do, sorry, you have before you the minutes from our most recent SEAC meeting, held in December. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I also like to continue to point out that our SEAC committee is a really great group of people this year. We've welcomed some new committee members, and we continue to do great things in support of our special needs students within our board. Happy to take any questions regarding the minutes from the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Brown? I would agree that it's a really great committee. Item twelve, correspondence, twelve point one, a letter to Minister Sandals regarding the ad hoc committee on the additional trustee. Any questions? Trustee Murray is the author of that. Do you have any comments?
One question, if I may.
Yes.
At the bottom, where his signature is, and underneath it, is that just a misprint, or is that how it went out?
Give us one minute. I'm assuming...
Bottom of the letter where he's, Paul has signed it.
Yes, then you've got the copies.
And then, and then the line underneath it all, it says, "We are..."
It's a source that I know of from the minutes of Holton Regional Council, Allison. Just a source.
No, no, no.
The very last line, the PDF file?
I am looking at the letter to the, oh, that's the, turn it off. Looking at the letter, and at the bottom of the letter, where he has signed off, it says, it doesn't say sincerely, it says sincere on my letter.
Okay, then you've got an interesting letter, because mine says sincerely.
Okay. Just so long as it didn't go that way, that's all I'm asking.
No.
It did not.
Okay, thank you.
Must have been a typo, I'm sorry, a printing error on your letter. Okay, Allison?
Oh, it's fine, as long as it went incorrectly, that's all.
I believe so? All right. Open question period. Any questions? Madam, do you have any questions? No? Okay.
No, I don't.
All right. We do not have to go back into in-camera. Resolution regarding absentees, we are excusing Erica. A mover, please, to excuse Erica.
Vienna.
Trustee Vienna, seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor?
I know.
Thank you. Adjournment and closing prayer. Trustee Morrison. And a second, trustee Rowe, all in favor?
I know.
Thank you.
In favor.
And we ask trustee Danko for a closing prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was from the beginning, is now, and ever shall be. Roll without end. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Anthony. And before we go, on behalf of the board, I'd like to most sincerely thank Jacqueline for her tremendous leadership, dedication, and hard work to Catholic education in Holton. Thank you. We wish you well. We expect to see you back, so they're just borrowing you. All right? So you have a wonderful time.
Thank you, Madam Chan. And thank you for the privilege of going to the ministry. Much appreciated. Appreciate your support. It is a true privilege to serve this board, and I do hope that I will continue to serve the board in the near run.
Thank you very much, Jacqueline. Good night, all, and please have a safe trip home to our three trustees on our conference call. Thank you very much for your patience. And good night.